I'm convening the Wednesday, September 7th, meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will not be meeting on 9/11. This is the, we are coming up to the 10th anniversary of that. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now, we all wait for public comment. Is somebody, are you here for public comment?
I am.
Okay.
We may not have on the agenda.
Please identify yourself for the thousands that watch us.
Sure. Beth Albert, Director of Human Services for Barnstable County. I'm just going to hand this out to each of you, which is just... So, I'm here today because Barnstable County and the county commissioners are proclaiming this week National Suicide Prevention Week. It's the week of September 4th through the 10th. And the theme is the changing of the legacy of suicide. As you can see, I handed out a calendar of events. There's lots going on in the community throughout this month and then even through the fall around suicide prevention activities. So, as the co-chair of the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition, this is something that counties and towns do, this type of proclamation, and I think it's an important gesture and that you, as county commissioners, do in proclaiming this week Suicide Prevention Week. I can read the proclamation, or one of you can read it.
Well, actually, what I'd like is if Steve could sort of explain to people in the audience what it looks like.
What it looks like.
Yeah, that would be very nice.
And Beth, I'll be happy to have you, unless you would like to read it, though.
Well, I'd like Beth to read it. I think she'd enjoy doing that. I don't think there are enough of me.
Thanks. Sorry, I need my glasses to read it.
Yeah, I need them.
No, I have mine. Whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every 16 minutes, and whereas suicide is the third leading cause of death for adolescents and young adults in Massachusetts, and the suicide rate on the Cape and Islands is one and a half times greater than the state average, whereas suicide is the most tragic and disruptive event for families and communities. They estimate that there's over 5 million survivors who have lost a loved one to suicide. And whereas suicide is a public health issue, it's a community problem, and through education and awareness of the issue, a great number of suicides can be prevented. Therefore, we do hereby officially designate the week of September 4th through 10th as Suicide Prevention Week in Barnstable County, signed by William Doherty, Mayor Pat Flynn and Sheila, the county commissioners. So, thank you.
Well, thank you.
And we usually have this up in the hallway. Mayor, I just also wanted to take a minute to introduce the three of you, if you haven't met her and Mark, to Candace Perry, who is the community organizer that we hired for suicide prevention activities. In Barnstable County, Candace is going to be focusing, and has been focusing, on reaching out to employers through a workplace, connecting employers to the Workplace Mental Health Initiative, and is particularly championing the Real Men, Real Depression Public Education Campaign that our department's undertaking along with the Suicide Prevention Coalition.
We should point out that men of a certain age, I believe so-called middle-aged men, are particularly susceptible to depression and to suicide ideation and unfortunately completions.
Right. And that's why we're focusing on it, because they seem to be the population that has not had a lot of attention focused on in the past. One other thing, quickly. One of the themes of Suicide Prevention Week and National Suicide Prevention Day, which is actually September 10th, is multicultural, looking at suicide through a multicultural view. And in light of that, the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition has translated and published its brochures in both Portuguese and Spanish, and will be distributing these tomorrow at our coalition meeting, and there was a press release that went out. So, continuing to try to do outreach to those populations.
Beth?
No, I just want to congratulate Beth and Candace and all of the members of the Coalition for the work they have done, particularly this last year. They have worked with individual communities, have brought a lot of people together, and I know part of your mantra is awareness, but if anything, I think there is far more awareness now than we ever possibly could. So, that's a great accomplishment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to make sure that that gets mounted in the appropriate place, right?
Yes, I'm going to take it right now and mount it when I have it.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. I'm glad you're on board.
See you all again many times.
Good to see you.
Okay. Now, onto our regular agenda. Andrew Gottlieb is here. You're going to give us a note on the CLF. I walked by their headquarters in Boston yesterday. I was tempted to go in and ask them what they were doing.
Find out whether or not. You know, Paul and I want to talk to you about, you know, one sort of ministerial matter, which is that the contract we signed with Anderson Krieger had a provision in it that in the event of 11, that the contract would expire. We haven't been formally served yet, although there's been a lot of activity around the lawsuits where we've utilized them. So, the action in front of you today is a request to approve an extension or renewal of the litigation defense contract with Anderson Krieger prior to the end of this month. We did a short-term extension from July 1st to September 30th, so as to not have a gap in coverage. So, that's the formal piece. The, you know, background to it is, you know, in line with an email I sent around to the governing board and copied you and a number of other interested parties, the two court parties, so backdrop, the suit between EPA and CLF is in federal court right now, and those parties have been having conversations. They, through EPA, undertook a mediation assessment to see whether a professional mediator thought there were issues at hand that were lent themselves to a mediated discussion. And as part of that process, two other non-court parties but interested parties were interviewed to understand their interests, that being the county, myself and Paul, and DEP, who, you know, represent Commonwealth. The mediator came back with his assessment and said, not to any great surprise, mediation might make some sense in this case, and the two court parties, CLF, well, three court parties, CLF and Buzzes Bay Coalition being the plaintiffs, and EPA as the defendant, and the two non-court interested parties, the state and the county, were engaged in a discussion to see whether all parties involved wanted to participate in the mediation. The court parties agreed to mediate. Paul and I, on behalf of the county, have agreed to participate. So, there's a mediation process that formally started September 6th, although the first meeting of the parties to the mediation is not, for another couple of weeks. In a court filing last week, EPA and two plaintiffs jointly filed a motion asking the courts to stay the court proceeding for 90 days to allow the mediation process to go on, and suggested that they would report back to the courts in early January on the results of the mediation, potentially ask for additional time if the mediation had not borne fruit, but the parties wanted to stay in discussions with one another. The court responded last, I want to say Friday, Thursday, Friday, granting the motion to stay the case until January 6th, but indicated that the court would not entertain any additional requests to stay. So, the message from the court was, if you guys want to mediate, come up with a settlement, I'll give you the time to do it, but you've got until December 6th, which is the 90-day period, to come up to a decision, or I, the judge, am going to start scheduling this matter before the court and get serious about it.
Just for my own clarification, who are "they"? Are we included in "they"?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of the participation in the mediation, since we took a very strong stand with regard to our non-involvement in the, as being a potential, being potentially liable in a court suit, what kind of standing do we have in mediation?
Our standing in the mediation is that the court parties have agreed that the county and the state are interested parties whose participation in the mediation might facilitate a useful outcome, whatever that may be. And I would imagine that the plaintiffs and defendants have different views on what a useful outcome to this discussion might be. It's been our position that because we will be affected by any outcome of this case, that it makes sense for us to have a seat at the table in discussing what that outcome ought to be. At the end of the day, though, the two court parties, as they currently stand, but three court parties, defendants and plaintiffs are the ones that can come to a settlement, whether it bears out of the mediation or not. The last sort of fact or piece that's out there that is worth calling your attention to is that in the joint filing the parties made to the court, there was a provision in there that said, in the event that the plaintiffs perfect service on any outstanding notices, the only outstanding notice is the one that's to Barnstable County, by September 15th, that they recommend and reserve the right to recommend to the court, that the two cases then be joined for purposes of scheduling and briefing and the like. So, there's a fairly clear indication that the defendants intend to activate their suit by September 15th. Hasn't happened yet.
With the defendants, they're the plaintiffs, aren't they?
In that case, we would be the defendant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the CLF and Buzzes Bay. Now, they have not told us that they're going to do that, and we're speculating a little bit based on that court filing, but I don't know why else they would have put it in there. But, you know, until it happens, nothing's changed. So, that's sort of where the case is at the moment. So, we'll be proceeding with being a non-litigant participant in a mediation between two other parties in federal court right now. And as such, you know, I think it moves us to continue to have representation. I think we've been well-served by Anderson Krieger as our representatives in this case thus far. I think their letter in response to the notice to sue back in October was, you know, put forward a very affirmative and vigorous defense for the county in the event that we do get sued, and I think it is one that the strength and vigor of it surprised the plaintiffs. And I think that has served us well and may well be attributed, could be a major cause why it's been a year and nothing formal has been filed against us. So, that's where we are.
If I may, I have some concern that the extension to September 30th, based upon the language with which it's proceeded, is that adequate? Because I have the sense...
No, no. He said that the short term, you had already approved 7-1 to 9-30. You're extending it now, I would assume, through the rest of the fiscal year.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what you...
Yeah, we haven't actually talked about a deadline, you know.
There must be some type of an arbitrary date so that we, you know, we're not approving something indefinitely.
Yeah. And I think the end of fiscal year, which is where appropriation runs, so it was probably not a bad cycle.
Yeah, there's a difference between sort of authorizing outside counsel for, as a subject matter expert, and putting an end date on that. I mean, if they're always subject to appropriation, you know, I would rather see it sort of run the cycle of the litigation like we've run other matters. So, it seems a little bit artificial to say that on a particular matter, you're going to have to come back and reauthorize legal counsel.
Is a practical matter in the budget that we just approved, I believe that there was funding for, you know, let's say for litigation support.
Yeah.
Those two things seem to go together pretty much.
Yeah, but my, I think you're making my point, though, is I think the budget cycle controls sort of the fiscal responsibility to pay outside counsel. The authority sort of hire and having them act on our behalf, I think, is a separate issue, and I'm not sure that it's appropriately tied to sort of a fiscal budget cycle. You know, for example, you know, if we're in a situation where it runs out in August like it did, and there are some vacation schedules, and we can't get them, we've got an answer of pleading, all of a sudden, we've got our lawyers saying, if you're not going to, if you're not going to pay us, we're not going to answer the pleading. So, I just, I'm not sure there's a rational nexus between tying, extending the authorization for outside counsel to act on our behalf to a fiscal budget year.
Yeah. And in reality, you know, when we originally came in and had this discussion, you know, we hired them, we authorized their hiring for defense, the authorization actually that you voted didn't have the time limit on it. That found its way into the contract, but it wasn't part of the formal vote, so I, you know, so I think Paul's right. I think the budget cycle really controls...
I would be more comfortable with a contract that stipulated that payment was subject to appropriation. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I kind of agree with this, because I think if you're going to commit to litigation to whatever the issue is, you just commit to it. There's no end date to it. You don't set timelines to say, well, let's review whether or not we still want to do this, because, as Paul was saying, that the time comes when there, when the appropriation is needed or additional appropriation. But I also think, too, we ought to look at the oversight of this particular litigation. I think, I know we have a litigation management committee, and I know that there are certain county, county issues that, whether they're related to employment or other things, that this litigation management team does. But I think, and I'm just raising it now, I'm not asking for any kind of vote on it, but I think we need to think about and come back and discuss it again when it's, when it's an agenda item. Because this is such a larger-scale type of litigation, it involves not only the county, it involves the state, it involves the feds, it involves, in a sense, municipalities are going to be part of it, too, that it has a much greater reach, it's more broad, and I think we should really think about, if we're going to have, commissioners want to have oversight to this process, which I think we need to have, we need to think about who should be involved in that oversight as opposed, we should look at the makeup of, and I know, we already know the makeup of the litigation management, but we should really look at this as a totally different type of lawsuit with more far-reaching impacts to it and includes more than just the county, and as I said, includes the feds, the state, the towns and everyone else. So, I just suggest that we think about this and maybe come back either next week or the week after, and have a real discussion about what that oversight should be. And I need to, I think we should not put an end date on the litigation. I think the appropriation is the, is the issue that would bring it back to us for action on that. But also, if we have a different type of oversight, we will be in far greater touch with the issue, which I think we as commissioners need to be.
Can I just mention something? The litigation management team did meet last Wednesday, Bob Troy, myself, and Andrew, and Paul, and the chairman of the commission, and we had a good discussion, and I think we're comfortable with the process as it proceeds. This is a bit of a unique situation in that there technically isn't litigation, and Andrew mentioned that, that's, I think, where the time limit probably came from. There was, there was some tied to if we're sued, then there is no timeframe. If we're, the service isn't perfected, then there's a timeframe, and it was kind of that. So, it's a bit of a unique situation. But given Andrew's statement that there may be some likelihood that the service is perfected by September 15th, I would agree with you. Then you don't put a timeframe on it, because you're, it's a litigation.
Right. And I think also, you know, the substantive change has been is that even though, as of today, we're not a court party, we are now a party to a substantial mediation discussion. So, we have a formal seat at the table, however long that plays itself out.
And you're always subject to, if you just choose not to fund it anymore, then you choose not to fund it.
Exactly.
I think the, when we hired Anderson Krieger and we strongly answered that notice of intent to sue, I think we did forestall immediate filing against the county and the commission and our inclusion in that federal lawsuit, which saved us the cost of having to answer those complaints and go through the mechanical aspects of litigation. Now, we're in a mediation, so to the extent that the mediation produces a result, then we have saved ourselves the cost of engaging in that litigation upfront. So, I think we've managed it appropriately to date. The mediation, I think, is a good thing. I mean, mediation is often used as part of litigation, but it's also used outside the context of litigation in interested parties. And I, for one, prefer not to be a named defendant in any lawsuit. I mean, I think it hurts us as it relates to costs associated with the mechanics of going through that lawsuit, but also raises some issues, because to the extent that we have as government entities tools that we could be using in an enforcement way that we're not, all of a sudden, those tools become available to the court once we're joined as a defendant. So, you know, I would want to avoid that, but I think we've avoided it for a year now. I don't think that we're going to avoid it much longer, but, you know, we'll have to wait and see.
The mediation is not binding, is it?
No, absolutely not.
There was one other. There's a, there's a whole issue with regard to the implementation of, let's say, of the response that was indicated by the Conservation Law Foundation has to occur at the, in the towns.
Well, no.
No, it really doesn't. I think that the suit that they're pursuing against EPA is really aimed at every property owner who has control of a waste disposal system.
And I think this is the fundamental misunderstanding, it has been, that somehow the towns are a necessary party and they haven't been joined yet. The CLF suit is aimed directly at property owners and not at towns, and so many of the towns have no existing infrastructure, they have no real standing in the issue right now. And so, I think it suggests that the towns have to be a party is to misunderstand the plea.
I'm not suggesting they have to be a party. I'm just, I'm just asking a question as to what is their level of involvement?
This is why I think it's, this is why I think it's more dire, because, you know, the towns are doing what towns do, and they have their own issues they've got to deal with as it relates to suing or not suing, moving stuff.
And the defense of their own budgetary bottom line and their limited cash.
This suit seeks to go around the towns directly to put financial liability on property owners and individual homeowners. And whether you like it or not, this is the only entity, the only...
The only entity that has that direct interest in mine.
...that represent the constituents that this lawsuit is aimed at.
Right.
And, and that's where it's really sort of, it's, it's not just different in, in kind, it's different in nature than, than other things we've dealt with in the past.
And I bring this up specifically to emphasize that particular point, because the, when we approach the boards of selectmen, we don't really get to their constituents, and I don't know if the property owners on the Cape are aware of their exposure risks.
I think by and large, they're not, and I think that there's a divergence, frankly, between the legal and financial interests of towns as municipal corporations and the residential and business property owners who own these suits. The successful outcome of the suit is very different if you are a municipal official versus being a homeowner. And that's where I think, you know, the county is in a unique position to stand in the place, philosophically, of the individual property owner, and look at this from their perspective and try to participate in a resolution of the case that's protective of the individual's interests versus putting the town's interests ahead of everyone else, because I think they are, they are fundamentally different in this case. And that is, that, that is lost on most people who are looking at this from a distance.
And my concern is that since the property owners, as individuals, have this great potential for exposure and liability with regard to solving the, you know, if the Conservation Law Foundation is successful, what can we do to give the kind of visibility to this issue that will get a greater level of understanding to these property owners? And I, and I would leave that to you as something that I think that, that deserves a lot more attention than we've given it up till now.
Understood. So, the specific request we have is to extend the Anderson Krieger authorization, and then just, you know, as a way, as an information point, you know, make everybody understands that, you know, as your delegated representatives, we've agreed to participate in this mediation process, and at appropriate times, we'll come back and report. There's a confidentiality associated with any mediation that's sort of integral and essential to make any kind of mediation work. And so, you know, as a part of that, we'll be signing on to the confidentiality requirements. So, we won't be broadcasting who said what about who in those discussions, but we will keep you, you know, as apprised as appropriate.
But at some point, since I'm concerned about the effect on the exposure of the property owners, I think there should be some strategy...
I think we can talk, I think we can talk to people about the implications of the suit, what the potential costs are and what the solutions are without violating any of our responsibilities under the mediation.
And the 90-day window on the mediation ends on December 6th.
And the court, the court report is due January 6th.
Yeah, and it's a pretty short window, and I don't know how optimistic I am that the mediation itself is going to produce anything, but within that timeframe, by the end of the calendar year, we're going to have to start talking about solutions that are in the best interest of the homeowners. And that's when, when we're really going to need to engage people. And we've been talking about the problem for six years. We've tried watershed tours, and we've tried the water protection collaborative approach. We have tried to exert regional leadership with many successes, but now, this is the critical time in this, in this lawsuit, is what's going to happen between now and the end of the calendar year, because if the mediation doesn't work, if we don't have a solution that we've worked out with the state and the feds on this, that federal litigation's going to kick in, and EPA is all of a sudden out of it, and the U.S. Department of Justice is in. And if you look at Chesapeake Bay, if you look at Lake Champlain, you know, I don't think that that's good news for us.
Okay, so what, do you have, have you framed a particular motion?
I think, yeah, I think, I'd suggest the request, the motion be the effect that the, that we authorize to continue engagement of Anderson Krieger in defense of the county and its support in the, in the federal litigation between CLF, Buzzes Bay Coalition and EPA. Subject to appropriation.
Yes.
Do you have something to say?
No.
I'd be happy to make that.
I would just say, without an end date.
Yeah, without an end date.
That's the subject to appropriation.
Subject to appropriation.
Subject to appropriation.
Okay.
Any further discussion on our part?
No.
Hearing that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. I, I call your attention to the article by Mark Nelson in the Cape Cod Times today about climate change and sea level rise, just throwing another issue that we probably haven't given a lot of attention to. I'm thinking at least in Falmouth or anywhere along the Cape, the south-facing estuaries, and the wastewater plants really, if you look at the phases, some of those phases don't occur for 30 years from now anyway. So, if those estuaries are under, some of them are under, the ends of them are underwater by then, puts a whole different perspective...
Well, that's one of the, you know, that's one of the four claims that the plaintiffs make against EPA, that they failed to factor in adequately the effect of climate change on the development of these nitrogen management programs. I don't know what that means.
Well, they're rather negative, you know, when you look at saltwater intrusion into public drinking water supplies and other issues like that. It's not, I don't think we can hold our breath, wait 30 years for the sea level to rise a foot and to clean out the estuaries.
No, I don't mean that. I'm thinking you need, we need to factor in what type of treatment are we going to use in those south-facing estuaries if 30 years from now, they won't be part of the wastewater, a wastewater treatment plan.
And I think what, and what we've tried to do in that is, and we brought the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs down, and the Commissioner of the Department of Environmental Protection down, to look at this county-sponsored initiative to look at opening up Horns Pond in Falmouth and...
Parkers River in Yarmouth.
Parkers River in Yarmouth and Mill Pond in Barnstable, as those, those are the least costly way to address this and to lower the number of units that we need to sewer, is to increase natural flushing. And I think that goes hand in hand with a climate change aspect to nitrogen remediation for Cape.
You know, about two or three years ago, the Oceanographic went along Surf Drive in Falmouth and actually laid out stakes of where the sea level would be 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. And you're, and you're standing in a parking lot there that in 10 years could be under, you know, could possibly be underwater, and 20 years, it just wouldn't exist anymore. So, it is something to really think about.
Well, ironically, it's the same parking lot that DEP's has of us in the past for not wanting to be able to rip up to make the cover bigger, so...
That was the previous administration. That was the previous administration.
Yeah. We're making progress.
The new commissioner is much more receptive to these types of projects.
Well, you mentioned Parker River, you've got the old drive-in that, you know, that needs to be addressed and being brought in. So there are many areas that need to be brought back to Marshall State. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, but my major concern in all of this is that I don't think that the people that are directly affected are completely aware of how much exposure they have.
I would agree. Well, and also Bill, I'd say that it's important for the county's participation because we have a huge number of people taking advantage of the Septic Betterment Program. And you would hate for them to sort of, the day they, the day after they signed that 10-year note, to have something come down from the court that says, oh, by the way, that system you just improved, it's not good enough anymore.
Well, not good enough, you need a federal permit for it.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is where this is headed.
Well, let's hope that the only federal involvement on Cape Cod is in the national sea shore. Do you have any else on this?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is Paul. I was going to see, my sense on this is this is sort of a beginning of a discussion and we're going to sort of lead this discussion.
Yes.
Where have you been?
What have I done?
What have you done?
Yes.
And what do you want and what do you expect from us?
Well, based on sort of the discussion we had last year, I want to show you what we've done and then we'll have, you know, another discussion about what's going on this year. I don't think being able to run IT equipment was part of my evaluation last year. It's hard. We're struggling with trying to get the picture up currently. Maybe we could take a five-minute recess or something.
Yeah, we'll do that. Take a five-minute break. We're back.
Ready to go, Steve? All right. Well, it's that time of the year for our performance evaluation, so we're going to try to start that, to start the discussion today and we'll give a little bit of a heads up on what we've done in the past. We've looked at our strategic plan, we reviewed that last year. FY11 goals, we're going to look at some major accomplishments and FY12 priorities as part of this discussion. And you remember last year, we really broke down the job description, the language in the job description, the corresponding language in the strategic plan, and tried to come up with initiatives. There's the cable mark.
I knew that would work. Excuse me.
So we look at the strategic plan that's been reviewed by the executive committee. You can see that there were expectations around the organizational mission, keeping a special place special, our objective to create a sustainable agency, respected for balance, provision of regulatory planning and technical services as outlined in the Act, and leadership, having the executive director provide leadership to guide the agency in delivering its mission, and the implementation with the executive committee and county commissioners setting the goal as my goal for the year. So that's what we discussed as part of the strategic plan. If we look at the first one, financial sustainability, you know, the goal was to reduce the structural deficits of the agency, has adequate financial reserves and funds directed at the programs aligned with our core mission. So we've spent a lot of time looking at that. And part of that is even in the restructuring process, looking at those departments that had in the past been dependent on, say, large federal grants, the federal grants have gone away, so reevaluation as to whether that program is appropriate for a part of our core mission to continue to run. In the, using Wetfest as an example, we thought it was probably more appropriate for that to be really run by the cooperative extension, so we transferred that program over to a different county department to allow us to focus on our core mission. But we look at the strategies to control expenses and manage resources carefully, the measures that resources have dedicated gold in their completion versus administration, trying to get as much money out the door. If you look at how we've handled direct local technical assistance money from DHCD, for example, you know, more of it goes directly to the towns by a very large percentage here on the Cape than in other regional planning agencies across the Cape, across the Commonwealth. So we've worked hard on that financial sustainability, looking at return on grants, increased revenues from DRI's and special services beyond the Environmental Protection Fund, the percentage of our budget supported by outside sources, and the money, the number of resources that priority program expenses that are covered by grants. You know, trying to move towards that 50-50 split, where 50% of our operation, in my estimation, should come from the Environmental Protection Fund, and then we should be active in grants and entrepreneurial, grants associated with our core mission to make us entrepreneurial and dynamic as a government agency moving forward. Technical excellence, you know, our goal here was to have the towns recognize the value of Cape Cod Commission services, tools, to have, you know, Commonwealth capital scores increased. That's changed because they've just done away with the Commonwealth capital scores. But to increase that technical assistance to towns and to have staff achieve professional development goals, which has always been important. So our measures are the number of towns that have received, have requested these services and have received them. And I think we've got a couple of slides on that, it's fairly extensive, staff satisfaction, turnover rate, we look at turnover rates, we do these anonymous surveys annually so we can get some real staff feedback on what they think of me and the direction that we're going. And recognition and feedback from local, regional, national awards, media coverage, invitations to present. You know, often when you're a Cape-based organization, especially of a regulatory nature, you really have to cross the bridge to get the sort of accolades that you do, but we have a number of them this year. Regional consensus, infrastructure projects we want to see completed and the regional policy plan implemented in all 15 towns, and intermunicipal projects increasing. And I think we've got good news on all of those ones too with specific measures. And then environmental protection and economic progress, where we've spent a lot of time talking about, you know, trying to drive the majority of growth into these economic centers and increase the acres of undeveloped land and parcels. And this has been part of the overall strategy, away from a one-size-fits-all to the Landys' vision maps, to sparking that development where we needed, especially in a place like Yarmouth, that needs to desperately stimulate its commercial tax picks. And there are a couple of FY12 initiatives that I think will come out under this piece of it here. So we've also had the commission gone through this internal alignment to make sure the strategic plan is being implemented. And so we do this OGSM approach, which looks at objectives, goals, strategies, and measures. We run through the executive committee and the county commissioners, and our four priority goals in FY11 were economic development, wastewater, wind, and communication. So if we look at some of those major goals and accomplishments and look at economic development, see the regional policy plan and our comprehensive economic development strategy, our SEDS goals, that low-impact and compatible development of balanced economy, regional income growth, infrastructure capacity, and regional collaboration and joint commitment. And a lot of this, I think, has worked. I mean, the SEDS document is three years old, but it's, almost everybody uses the term SEDS now and pretty much knows what it means. And it drives the discussion in places like the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce and some of the local chambers too. And the 16 regional projects are moving forward, especially with Open Cape and the Smarter Cape Initiative that we had over the spring. The other piece is Stats Cape Cod. This is in our partnership between the Cape Cod Commission and the Economic Development Council. We have got a brand-new Stats Cape Cod page that's up on our new website. And so we have this data and information dissemination that, when I arrived four years ago, was literally in stacks of paper on the ground and sort of in, sort of an 18th century approach to sort of information collection and analysis. And now it's available on the web and transparent and accountable. We also have our reset team, which gives us town technical assistance. We spent 1,000 hours in Yarmouth last year, spent significant time in Born and Buzzards Bay this year into next year, and we've got several other priority reset projects, one of them in Sandwich, that are going to be moving forward, plus the SEDS project, those 16 regional priority projects. These are the SEDS priority projects. You can see the Center of Excellence for Water Quality and that regional information office is continuing to evolve as part of the Smarter Cape Initiative and our partnership with IBM. The canal area assessment, transportation improvement, that look at the bridges, brought to the feds, the feds didn't like it too much, we're continuing that discussion with the state and actually came up at the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning. And waste minimization to reduce, reuse, recycle, our solid waste initiative there, those are new ones that we have brought to there. And we have, and probably would be helpful to have a separate discussion and presentation just on the 16 regional priority projects and where we are in each one of those. And we've also have a profile management software package that we purchased now that should be up and running in December. And I'd like to use the SEDS program as a way to present that project management software too, so you can see where we are in each one of those. This is Stats Cape Cod. And I think it'll work. Yep, there we go. So this is our new Stats Cape Cod website with very sort of user-friendly information and easier profiles, since you can find profiles, benchmarks, data by town, and obviously our maps that are up there, much more user-friendly and really good information for residents and for local business owners too. So if we go back to the power company. And we look at, this is the 1,000 hours of work that we did in Yarmouth Route 28 last year. And this has produced now from the town, an actual plan for development in this area on Parker's River. Here we brought the secretary and the commissioner down to the Parker's River to look at the Marina Project, to look at the bridge, the increase of covert expansion down there, and the sewer project in the economic development here. We also did with the Davenport Companies there, a development agreement for an $80 million two hotel renovation on South Shore Drive in Yarmouth. So an extensive amount of work that's been done there, an example of some of what we can do in some of the other communities.
On the Yarmouth project, they're supposed to be going to town meeting for authorization for funding.
On wastewater, there's a special town meeting in September for $55 million appropriation for the first step of that wastewater project.
Are we helping them with, you know?
We've actually been, I think Andrew and I have been requested to speak on the town meeting floor, so, which is, you know, given that we've had to fend for, fight for our lives there, it's the sort of town meetings. It's a change in the weather, so that's good news. Enhancing partnerships, a Smarter Cape Summit, we meet on a weekly basis now with Wendy Northcross from the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce, Dan Gallagher from Open Cape, and Bert Jackson from the Tech Collaborative moving forward. So we're going to have some really great stuff to report back to you on this as we look forward to next year's summit, which, and these aren't going to be annual meetings where we just get in a room and sort of celebrate how wonderful we are and all this stuff. We want, we have measures that came out of last year's meeting, we want to sort of clearly articulate those through September and then show that we've made some progress around the Strategic Information Office moving forward in the spring. And part of this is, part of what's developing here is an effort to write a grant for that $4 million regionalization pool of money that the government put in the budget there. And it's sort of, we're working in partnership with Yarmouth around some e-permitting stuff that seems to fit hand in glove with our Strategic Information Office initiative. And then wastewater in 11, you know, we have a regional wastewater management plan integrating the environment affordability, infrastructure, and growth management. We have $150,000 earmark that we got from the state for the budget this year to move forward, to take that regional plan, which is more of a policy plan, and start to put more bones in it. So now we should wind up at the end of the regional planning process here with a map of the Cape that identifies watersheds, has total maximum daily loads established for every watershed, and then has demographic and density information tied in that will then allow us to lead, to make some decisions about which kind of options and technologies would be available for removing nitrogen to meet those total maximum daily loads. So this is going to be a big part of our focus in FY12, and getting the money was a big part of our focus, along with our watershed tours in FY11. You know, in the environment, you know, balancing the natural and the human-built environments, you've got the population problem and the nitrogen problem. I think you've seen the little videos we have on both of those, so I'm not going to show them to you again. The affordability of the wastewater issue, you know, 8 billion versus 3 billion at the low side, 8 billion at the high side, and any sort of number in between, between 5 and 6 billion, depending on how they structure potential, how we structure potential solutions. And what of those imperfect solutions that are out there now, which ones of those are used? Infrastructure, we've looked at gray infrastructure, all this infrastructure being used on the Cape right now, green infrastructure, you know, using aquaculture and more natural processes to remove nitrogen, like we discussed opening color words. All of these options have been on the table, you know, quite often I think the county gets painted as a big pipe solution kind of approach, and that's clear, that's never been the case and isn't the case now. Continuing to push smart growth, guiding growth towards areas that are adequately supported by infrastructure and away from those that need to be protected. This is our watershed tour last year we did on the education side, looking at Acoy Bay, Three Bays, Heron River, Lewis Bay, Bass River, and Papanesha Bay. And then on wind, we did the ocean management DCPC, those regs are up, I think in front of the assembly this afternoon. So moving forward on that, renewable energy, geothermal sand and gravel mining, cables and pipelines, extensive amount of work done on this last year. What I, you know, I am as proud of the process associated with this as the result. It's the first time that we've brought together elected officials from all 15 towns to sit on a policy committee, to have them invest in this issue upfront. And I think that that worked, worked very well. I think the towns appreciated that, their inclusion in that process. And we had stakeholder and public participation, and we did a lot of work on visual impact assessment and have a pretty robust capability in-house to do these kind of visualizations now. And they have, that will bleed into other areas, I think, that will be useful when we deal with growth management issues going forward. We also had an opinion poll that we conducted as part of this, and these were our DCPC next steps, and we're at that point now, we're going to forward the DCPC to the assembly delegates this afternoon. On the land-based turbines, we did the regional policy plan, we developed some minimum performance standards. They were approved, we're waiting for the state right now, state DEP and DPH, we're working on some joint study of sorts, and we didn't want to jump that, we want to learn from that and integrate that into our process as we develop the technical bulletin that informs the statements going forward. So we've been working with Suzanne Condon at the Department of Public Health on that issue, and so we expect something soon. On communications, on the public relations side, this is where I've been. And that's a picture from the Smarter Cape conference last year. Apparently I've put on about 10 pounds since my last evaluation. But we actively, aggressively out there as many nights during the week as possible. You know, I think it's the most important part of my job, I think it's 50% of my job. But I tell people at the commission is that, you know, they work hard and they've got, their job is a day job, you know, I have a night job too, and this is what it is. But it's the most important piece of what we do is to get out there and talk to people. As it relates to sort of awards and honors, this spring this year, we, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency gave us a Clean Air Award. The irony of that is that the only sort of environmental piece that we don't have any jurisdiction over is air quality. But this is for our regional policy plan as it relates to energy and the requirement that new commercial construction on the Cape produce 10% of its energy on site. And that was innovative. It was also a very replicable plan, and that's what the EPA really recognized it for. And it has been adopted in several other areas that they're talking about moving in that direction right now. So we're proud to do that. The Mast dot Excellence in Career Options, the EPA National Conference presenters, Sharon Rooney and Phil Daskin did the visual impact assessment. And then we had a coordinated long, day-long mobile session that came down here that looked at old town to new urbanism and some of the stuff we're doing around growth management there. It was our 20th anniversary last year, so we had a little celebration of that, but we tried to keep it pretty low-key. And then we have a redesigned website, so this is way overdue, but it's here, it's up and running. I've heard some, some good things.
I like the fish.
From Bill, we have the fish down there. And see the fish in the corner? And then these little things sometimes, we need to make it fun too, so we can.
Oh, my.
You've worn my hat.
It's a new website. You know, we've got to make it fun, we want to make it fun for people as well. And then we go to the, to the real website here, and you can see these things do sort of turn over.
I thought you were going to put a mustache on it.
Yeah, it's sort of thing like that, like an Etch A Sketch we can use to.
I can do that. I don't know why it's not coming up here, but it is much easier to use, collective, you know, just simple things. You know, every time you call up the page, we get a different landscape picture down here, all taken by commission staff. But then we've got a quick link, so whether you're a community and you just value a business or a town, you know how to click on that. Announcements, a really amplified calendar section that gives you much better information than we've had in the past. Anytime you click on the Cape Cod Commission logo itself, it brings you back to this homepage. And then these, these things sort of do turn over and show you some of what we're about if you're not from here. But then our regional policy plan, our resource center, and our initiatives page, if you look at the regional policy plan, this is actually a flip book. So this is actually what you would see in the regional policy plan as you open it up, only it's enhanced. only it's enhanced. When you get in there from a regulatory perspective, because it's annotated, so to the extent that you're looking at a particular section, you know, it'll give you references that you can go to on the side, and you click there to open up that specific document.
Very cool.
So this is what the regional policy plan should be, it's what the, what all sort of online interaction has to be, I think, in the, in the future.
Can that be downloaded?
Yes. So you can download, you can print out specific pages.
So what format is it? Is it a PDF?
It would be a PDF file if you download it. This is the downloaded format, PDF, so you can print out the entire regional policy plan or just parts of it. I think you've got different options on that. And then in our resource center, we have different ways to find things. And what we have now are most requested documents section, and this is live, so this is real. So you can see, given Hurricane Irene, Storm Irene, emergency preparedness handbooks, map of storm shelters, stats Cape Cod, which we just unveiled and sent a press release out. So they're, these are the ones that are most visited sites. And so we know that it's active, it's working. And we also have analytics now, so we can, we know how many people are going to which page and are doing that. You can also find things by department, by town, by type of document that you're looking at, whether it's, you know, multimedia, or whether it's a map or graph topic. So it's really far and away, much easier to use than what we had before. And the shape of things to come. And Nancy Hosfeldt really worked hard on this particular issue. And then the final sort of big piece is our initiatives page. And so this will show you some of our initiatives, our watershed tour, our reset projects, our local technical assistance that includes that DLTA function, our ocean planning DCPC, and our Smarter Cape Cod Initiative. And so on each of these, if you, if you look at it, it gives you details on the initiative, and then on Smarter Cape Cod, it'll bring you to that page with much more robust information. So a lot of work went into this, we got a really good deal on the consultant we used, there's no way they expected to spend this much time. We actually used a virtual company that had Cape Cod representation, some local people. So in the end, I think we wound up with a great project and a good product.
I have to say, it's, it's very clean-looking, you know, it has a lot of that white space, it's, it just looks much more user-friendly.
Good looking maintenance piece.
Because usually, I mean, a lot of our websites, even.
Maintaining it?
Even the one that you, you know, your former one and all of the ones that I go to, there's so much stuff on the front page, you can't find exactly what it is you're looking for, and then you click on that, it's not really what, it's not leading you to where you wanted to go.
And we did some focus discussions, and so the clean, the white space is important, so it's not overwhelming. And really being identified, having opportunities to identify who you are as a user rather than necessarily what specifically you're looking for. Because a lot of people are going, I need a map that they showed at some presentation.
Right.
They have no idea which, they couldn't go through titles and find the right map, so they have to identify who they are and some other specific information that'll give them the information that they need. So that's the website, and then our five-year strategic plan.
Excuse me, but how to maintain it, so?
We, we can maintain that in-house, but we, it's actually, exists on the cloud. It's plugged into the county servers, but it exists on the clouds. We have a contract for that that's off-site, too.
Okay.
So we can, that was sort of, we spent a lot of time looking at that. So we've worked on our five-year strategic plan, our internal communication plan, and looking to our FY12 priorities, and they are continuation in many respects of the FY11 priorities, which are wastewater, looking at that regional wastewater management plan, continuing our watershed tour, finishing our technical bulletins, and looking at a Cape-like build-out analysis for wastewater as we move into that. Smarter Solutions, looking at Strategic Information Office and our Water Quality Center of Excellence. You know, we've reached out, and this, these initiatives, too, start to become more county-wide solutions. They involve Open Cape, they'll involve IT, they involve county health, and George's IA research that he's doing on the base and its connection to the Living Laboratory in Woods Hole. And how does that sort of fit in with the state and expedited permitting process for alternatives for use in remediating wastewater issues on the Cape? So that becomes a big push for us. And then our economic development piece, we continue to push this. So we have our SENS priority projects, we're looking at wastewater economic centers, Smarter Cape Initiative, regional development, financing authority, and economic center cost analysis, waste minimization. And we are pursuing with the Federal Economic Development Agency, a designation as an economic development district. And that's, we've been working on that last year. I hope to get that designation this year. Just got some positive feedback on $60,000 planning grant to help us do that from Federal Media a couple of weeks ago. So I think that that's moving in the right direction. But in my sense, I think we do need to get a little bit more bold on the economic development side. We've done a lot of work over the last four years, moving away from being a strictly regulatory agency to a planning agency with a regulatory function. And we've broken away from a one-size-fits-all approach to that regulation, and we've created these new tools, whether it's limited DRI review, development agreements, and most of what we've done over the last few years have been driving big projects through development agreements, where the business community is no longer that concerned with dealing with the Commission directly. We have several big, big projects that we've pushed through there. But it's the Chapter H, the Land Use Vision Maps, and having towns raise thresholds that I still scratch my head and wonder why no towns have done it after having been criticized by towns for, for these regulations. So what I suggested to my executive committee last week, and what I've talked to staff about for the last month, really, is an initiative this year where I think that the Commission should look at industrial service and trade areas or tech parks. We should map those, and we should, on the county level, raise thresholds to 40,000 square feet in those areas. And I think this is an important step forward. You know, we will attract much different businesses at 40,000 square feet than we do at 10,000 square feet. We've got two businesses in Born right now that are in tech parks that need to expand. And we need to be able to work in a way where that, we can lift those thresholds and allow that to happen. So that, we're going to get to work on that over the next 60 days, and so you'll see the work, that work product come to you sooner rather than later.
I'm delighted that you're looking at that, because I think in our private conversations, I've talked about the importance of emphasizing the impact of a project rather than its arbitrary size.
Well, you know, it's a good point, Bill, because the Chapter H allows you to raise thresholds. Raised thresholds will only get you bigger buildings. So in an area like Buzzards Bay, downtown Hyannis, you really need a growth incentive zone, because you need a cumulative relief from a town that has the planning capacity to parse that out based on good design, to attract people that want to live there, retail professional office space, and get that mixed together. And the town's got to be able to focus on, on those areas, and Hyannis has been a good example of some success there. In these tech parks, though, bigger buildings really do work. You know, the kind of business you can get at 40,000 square feet is different than the kind you can get at 10,000. And when I look at some of these tech parks, when I did my first couple of weeks on the job, you see 9,999 square feet, 9,999 square feet. And so we need to get beyond the nonsense. And in some instances, in many instances, those buildings are not as environmentally friendly as they could be if they were co-located in one large building. So it's an example of where that particular regulation, some of those targeted tech parks, is really sort of working against our ability to protect the environment down here and protect our quality of life and not in favor of it. So we, we have to do that. And I, I think we can come up with a comprehensive approach to doing Cape-like.
We will be looking at a contract for servicing the Regional Transportation Authority that I think ties in with, let's say, an overall plan, if you're developing larger buildings, the possibility of larger opportunities for employment. So I hope that you consider that as far as some of the support for it.
Absolutely.
While you were on economic development?
Yes.
And I just wanted to comment on this because it's very, it's so relevant, and it ties in so well with the plan, your plan. At the regionalization conference last week, I went to the workshop on economic development, and that was the state office that sponsored it and actually spoke. And what they did was they created what they called three core concepts.
Yeah.
Planning, permitting, and infrastructure. And then from those core concepts, they, they discussed preservation and development. And particularly, as preservation could actually cross town lines, and a particular town was, was looking to preserve a certain area, and it was on the, on the border, then why not look to the other town to see if they had a parcel that, that abutted that, that would make sense for them to preserve and make a much larger space? But the other thing they said was that, so often now with a state, what you have to do is go to a website and see what all your options are in terms of support or funding or whatever it might be, and there's a whole laundry list at the federal-state level that you might need to access to get support for a project. So what they've decided now is they're going to say, well, if you have a concept, then rather than you go scrolling through all of this, why don't you call us and we will help identify.
Right.
The agencies that can help you. And I, I thought that was a really great step forward for them, but their core concepts fit so well with your core concepts, I mean, there's a match.
Yeah, well, it hasn't, it's not like we haven't been talking to each other.
I know that. You didn't, it just didn't happen that way, I realize that.
The April Anderson, who's.
April Anderson, yeah. She was one of the speakers, yeah.
And it's, what the state uses in their approach is, they have two basic categories of land use, which is PDAs are Priority Development Areas, and PPAs are Priority Preservation Areas. And that is an even simpler approach of our four categories that we have in Land Use Vision Maps. And, you know, not to make an issue, but we started the year before they, in these discussions and lenses, but it's all, it's the way land use planning is going national, if not internationally. So it's not surprising that we've been doing the same thing, and we've been checking in with each other. So I talked to April at the conference, too. I think it's important for the Cape to take our Land Use Vision Maps and to roll it up and to marry it with the state process there. Because the other thing the state's been doing is their Mass Works Grants Program, merging some of those difficult grants that are difficult to negotiate. And the other thing that's happening, too, like a couple of the, the two companies in Born now, especially one of them, they, a lot of people do come to the Commission first now, they're not as afraid to drive by that they're going to get sucked into the vortex of regional review and never escape. So they'll come in and say, this is my project, where would it be best to do that? So we've done a little bit of that consulting, but we've also talked to the Chamber about maybe formalizing that in the form of an ombudsman or someone who can advise businesses that are looking to grow or looking to relocate here. And I know that Wendy's been working, and the Chamber's version of the EDC has been designated as the Regional Economic Development Organization for the region. They're going to get some money now. And so I think that you'll see that we'll work much more closely with the Chamber, and that we could formalize a position, maybe with the Chamber, that would be able to advise people on how and where to go, even though we would be giving a lot of that technical assistance. But we've done a lot of that, and so I look forward to continuing to work with the state, AKA beat them at their own game. So we're, we're moving in that direction. And it's all good. And it's, and it's been a tremendous turnaround at the state level.
Well, I mean, it was easy to see that what you have done before, they are now beginning to sort of mirror at the state level.
Yeah, and they're starting, the piece that the, that the state does better than we do is the infrastructure piece, because they have more control over those resources. But to the extent that they are using their Mass Works Program to aggregate grant programs and then point those grants in the direction of areas that they've designated as priorities for development is good, unless, as many state programs do, they all wind up going into very urban areas and they ignore places like Cape Cod. So, you know, there's, there's natural tension there, but we're, we have the same principles in mind. We just want to make sure that we get our share of infrastructure funds, too. You know, we are as needy as any other community in some ways as it relates to wastewater even more. So wind, we have our DCPC and our technical bulletin. When the state's, I expect it will probably name the Technical Advisory Committee for the bulletin either this month or next month, and I anticipate the state's report's going to be pretty much ready to go at that point. Regionalization initiatives, Solid Waste, our DLTA programs, and our Regional Building Inspector that, who seems to be, who's working out great for us, I think, working for the town of Wellfleet and a couple of other towns, Born being one, Yarmouth and Sandwich being others. I've mentioned the availability of that building inspector, so I think that's going to work really well. We have, you know, she, Sabell's is credentialed as a lead certified architect as well as a building commissioner, so I think that that is a step in the right direction. And then thank you.
Let me ask you a question, because it relates to the e-permitting. If, if there's a wider use of building inspector, that seemed, that would tie in with the, you know, with the benefit of having an e-permitting, because you'd have one person that would be, you know, would be available to support that permit.
Yeah.
Over several towns.
Now, the e-permitting initiative, and Ed Santio in Yarmouth has been leading that particular charge.
Yes.
He's done a lot of work in the private sector on these issues. But this is, you know, this is, the tension in regionalization is, is that the regional government's going to somehow step in and start to compete with local governments and municipalities on the provision of day-to-day services, and that's really not the case. I mean, this is an example of the economies of scale and the information level is really at the regional level. On e-permitting, it would cause, what Yarmouth figured out pretty quickly is when they looked at the, the costs associated with startup, they were this, there were, there was a break-even point where the costs were the same for everyone under 250,000 in population, meaning it was as expensive for one town to do it as it would be for 15. And so they recognized that immediately. But it, what it allows, it allows the communities to maintain what they do, you know, school, fire, education, community character, and community identity, which I think is what they are really concerned about most, through their own portal. Even though you're using a shared infrastructure that's regional in nature, the end user's never really going to, going to know that. But we get all of this information that bleeds together, and all of a sudden, we, we know a lot more. And just from a regulatory perspective, using the regulatory program with the Commission, if we had better information about building permits over time, we would be able to develop less intrusive regulation, not more intrusive regulation, because we wouldn't be guessing. We'd actually be reacting to facts. And so that's the kind of information loop we need to, to create if we want to have a regulatory environment that promotes development in the right places that doesn't discourage it. So I'm very excited about the potential of that for the region. And so that's my presentation about a little bit of what we did last year and what we're thinking about next year.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
You didn't mention too much about Solid Waste, and that must be getting to the point where towns are going to need to make a decision.
Yeah.
What's going on with that? Maybe that's a separate discussion, Paul.
Yeah, it's, I, it would take about 30 minutes to go through what we've done on last year, but I would say it's the one area where a regional approach has really worked, except for Brewster, sort of cut their own deal and ran earlier in the year. But that's sort of given their situation sort of understandable. Rest of the town seemed to be hanging together in the discussions with CMAS, and I think we're going to wind up with a pretty good contract, but Patty Daly's been leading those discussions, so I would suggest that maybe she comes back and speaks to you more specifically about this, this status.
Is she at a place where she can give us a summary of where we are right now?
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe we should schedule that.
Yeah, and there's a bit of a pause, so it's probably a good time to check in.
Yeah. Maybe next couple of weeks, we could have her come in and give us an update.
Well, schedule it. Next weekend, the next couple of weeks up to October 5th, a kind of fall, but we've got.
October, yeah.
Yeah, because in Lima, I think there's, there's a bit of an impetus out there to look at pay-as-you throw up.
Yeah.
As well. And now that Sandwich has done it, and people seem to like it, I'm hearing that other towns are considering pay-as-you throw up, but that has other implications, too, whether it's curbside or whether it's at a transfer station, I mean, it's.
You know, it all impacts on.
And it all impacts the, the bottom, I mean, the end result is, compared to Solid Waste, go.
Right. And so I think that, you know, working on that, that potential contract for disposal is the first piece, and then after that, you can look at curbside collection, and you know, Falmouth has curbside collection, it's based on your general tax levy, and there are other towns that have looked at the difference between curbside collection and using your landfill, and curbside is actually a cheaper option, although it sounds counterintuitive in many respects. In some communities, so they've got to look at that, and then pay-as-you throw up if you're going to keep the landfill so much. But that first piece is to get that contract, to know what your, what your costs are going to be locked in over a fixed period of time.
At this stage, I guess, thank you very much for the presentation. At this stage, I guess we have to decide what our next step is as far as continuing this process. We do have to, you know, we do have to sign off on an evaluation. I think, I think last year, you were kind enough to give us a suggested format, and I wonder if you could submit that to us again?
Sure.
And then we could, you know, we could take a look at that, and then perhaps in two weeks.
Yeah, you should probably do your individual ones and then get together collectively and talk. And Paul, I think if you gave them a copy of that, it would be helpful as well.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. And I might mention that we need to review.
Need to schedule mine, yeah. I know you've been working on it, you should mention that.
I have, I've, I've got a collection of goals, and this would be the time. I have, I've got a collection of goals, and this would be the time, if you could give me the format, I could share that with the two of you and you could, perhaps we could wrap all of this up together.
Yeah, I said, you have the format, you said you were having a hard time opening it.
Well, I opened up the one that, you know, that I filled out.
Okay.
I need a blank one.
Okay, sure.
So send the blank ones to, because I've already filled out mine. Send the blank ones to-
You want paper or electronic?
Electronic. Electronic, and then we can print it out.
Okay. And then we'll try to sort of wrap this all up together.
Yeah.
If that's agreeable.
That's my estimate.
Okay. The, what's your, the next thing we have on our agenda would be the summary of action.
Yeah.
If you all have an opportunity to look at it.
I dare.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. If there are no questions, then I'd entertain a motion for approval.
No, just a second.
Any further discussion? Turning on all his favor?
Hi.
Do you have anything to report for the last couple of weeks? Not for a while.
Yeah, I think I have a lot to report and I can't, I was at Children's Co. board meeting this morning, and I was at certain places last week, I don't keep my diary, but no, it's interesting. Next week is a conference on child abuse and domestic violence being held at the Cape Codder, sponsored by the Cape Codder, and that was, it's a two-day conference. It's, you know, they get their upgraded education units and that sort of thing. So it's very heavy material to listen to. A lot of it's very painful, but that's the work they do and, you know, it's a very well-attended conference. They have over 200 people signed up for it already. So that is good. They're struggling with their budget a little bit. They might have to do some rearranging, if not maybe cutting a part-time person just because different monies and their fundraising efforts aren't what they were in the past. And, you know, they're moving ahead. They're, they're doing lots of different efforts to raise money and raise awareness. This is Awareness Month. You'll be seeing the pinwheels coming up next in various places. So that is to remind people that there is unfortunately child and sexual child abuse that occurs even here on Cape Cod, and there is an agency that is very professional and very well-equipped to take care of it.
Radio spots, are they going to do that?
Yes, and they have been doing their radio spots. They're still, that's still part of it. It was on very early this morning, I heard one. But they, there was a lot over the summer, I remember hearing.
Yeah.
So they've done a lot on that regard, and things are moving forward. They have a good board there, and I think now they're going to be reaching out to the assembly and see if they'd like to have an assembly member on the board. So I'll mention that to Ron today as well.
Wasn't Charlotte Striebel on that?
Charlotte was, and Charlotte is still, but she's not really an assembly member anymore. So she, even though she may be an alumni, they would like to have somebody directly involved, just so that the assembly is understanding what they do. And we went to the regional conference last week, and that was all very good. And then there was the holidays. So I guess it's been a couple of weeks, and I know that I've done several things, but-
Did you go to the Toronto Ag Fair?
Yes, I did go to the Toronto Ag Fair, yeah, that was very nice. And my girlfriend's niece won the blueberry eating contest.
Were you in for that?
Yeah.
I think I just missed it, because I-
Yeah. No, I just missed that, but the little girl that won that. So that was very nice, it was a great, it was a perfect fall day, it was like the beginning of those autumn-
Nice breeze, everything.
Autumn, you know, get your pumpkins and that sort of thing. So that, and it has the potential to really grow. I think that that could turn into another oyster fest if they get enough vendors and, you know.
Well, the Cape Light Compact was giving away light bulbs.
Yes, but I mean, you could-
And the 4H was there.
It could have a little different slant than just vendors, but if you, I think that that has a real potential. It was a very, very nice day and-
I thought it was a swell, small-town event.
It was a swell, small-town event, and it highlighted the best of it, so.
Did they have a good turnout like they had this year?
Yes, they did. It was a very, it was very steady all day, yeah.
Oh, yeah. It was tough to get, I had to walk about, you know, about 800 yards.
Right, right.
They had the whole town blocked off.
All blocked off.
It was really neat.
It was very nice, very nice.
I've got the beauty contest, Binyad Beauty Contest, it was a lot of fun.
Yes, that was, that I, that I sort of came, I got in a little bit at the end, I came in the middle of the day. But, you know, good, good stuff and beginning of fall fests, I guess, across the Cape, so.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to-
But they didn't call me.
I know.
You should have called me until you were here.
Oh, you're coming down.
I figured you two bailed. All right, sorry.
That's okay. I wanted to talk about the Sean O'Brien and the hurricane preparation, the EOC, the Emergency Operations Centers, and how really effective they were, at least at the local level that I was involved in. I attended three of the EOC meetings prior to Friday, Sunday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And I was so impressed with the amount of coordination and support that the communities had from Sean O'Brien's operation. It was, it really, I mean, I actually was just so impressed, I couldn't believe it. And the various conference calls where everyone participated through MIMO, all of it. I mean, it really helped the towns absolutely be right on top of their planning for the response. It's unfortunate that N-Star is out there as, you know, the child who didn't play, so to speak. There were a lot of issues with that, and I know they're being addressed at the state level, and they're certainly being addressed, being addressed at the local level. But aside from that, I thought, and that things went very, very well, and that it really helped the local town EOCs to be able to stay on top of everything that was going on in a coordinated basis. So kudos to Sean and his group.
Absolutely. I participated in one of the conference calls, and it was amazing, because Sean has been running this for so long, there's a relationship and a familiarity with each other that goes, you know, to the police, the fire, you know, the health, and they were, it was that kind of energy that was coming through on the phone call about getting, and when things got to a particular problem, there were people that were on the phone and say, okay, we can talk about that offline and get on it. So I thought it was a well-organized, well, you know, well-organized event.
And if I may just add in on that, since I am a member of the Red, the Board of, on the Board of the Red Cross, the Red Cross is also part of that group that gets together and part of that emergency response. And they are a volunteer, primarily a volunteer group, so they do lots of training to people, with people all across the Cape. And even though it's volunteers, it costs them a lot of money every time this happens. And, you know, we can look back and see, gee, that, we weren't hit as badly as a lot of people, we got wires down, but can you imagine if we got hit by a category five? We were going to be in trouble. I mean, if this is what we got from this, we have, you know, but there are people in place, there were people on the ready-to-do-it, and there were people in shelters, even though we might not have thought it was necessary, people who were alone, isolated, infirmed, really did need some shelters. And that does cost them, you know, over a hundred grand probably every preparation, just as far as getting that stuff out. So for the audience out there, if they're always looking to-
Well, I think that contribute and donate, I would say that the Red Cross is actually, it doesn't happen for nothing, but they do have a lot of volunteers that commit to that, so. I think that there's, there's one piece that probably needs a lot of work, and that's the, the people who are at home, who, when they lose power, they lose all communication.
Right.
And nobody knows who they are. So I think there was a great push to have neighbors look in on neighbors, so that if they knew that there was somebody on their street who was either elderly or living alone or had some physical incapacity or other, not to be able to take care of themselves or to get what they needed, to look out for people like that. And I think more of a community outreach of neighbors helping neighbors would be, would be the next step in the process. Because I think there were a number of people who were isolated and a lot of people didn't know about that.
Well, we know that there's been an evolution of the shelter process. It was just people, now it's people and pets. And now I think that we have to, we understand that most people are sheltering in place, so there is very important that we know who's vulnerable in the local community.
Well, it's funny you should mention that, because one of the things I wanted to report on in my weekly report was the R E P C wishes to remind everyone that September is National Preparedness Month. And so they say, take the time now to make sure your family and community are ready for emergencies and disasters of all types. And they put together an emergency supply kit, and one of those things, and we had to use it, is a transistor radio with a couple of batteries in it, because that can be, if you don't have internet or TV, that can be your only source of information, so you need one of those things. They say make a family emergency plan, so you know where to meet and those types of things. And it says, be prepared to help your neighbor. That's one of the most important things. Work as a team to keep everyone safe. And Sean wanted me to say, to learn more, you can visit www.reddy.gov or call 1-800-BE-READY, and they'll tell you all those things that you need to look at. So, and Sean will appreciate you giving him kudos from the town of Falmouth, because you are a new member to the R E P C.
I know that.
And I know there were a few birthing pings going through the sheltering and all that.
Well, the biggest problem was the shelter.
I think it worked out.
Because Otis had said that Falmouth could use their shelter, but then Air Force One happened to be sitting at Otis.
Right.
So consequently, you couldn't even get to the door of Otis if you're accessed. I think somebody must have told the president it was time for him to leave, because-
Right, just holding things up.
We couldn't get organized with him still there. So, but he did leave early.
Yeah.
But anyway, we ended up setting up-
And then at least moved it the next time we got through it.
Shelter, and it worked fine, yes. The, I want to remind, oh, the other thing, the Senate President's office sent out an email saying that, well, I think she was away, but the office was advised to let the towns know that if they had people who were still out of power, this was on Monday, to let her office know, because they had other contacts to N-Star. So I knew of some people who just didn't have power, so I emailed and said, yes, here are the lists of, well, it wasn't a long list, but three or four people that I knew of. And then, so the next day I decided to see how it worked. So I called one of the people on the list and said, has your power back yet? Yes, this morning, this truck drove by and, I mean, it could have been, it could have been just an absolute coincidence, because these individuals made their own contacts to N-Star. But anyway, it turned out that at least one of the people had their power restored the next morning. And it was a really simple kind of a solution. It was a transformer that somehow, when there's, when they go out, there's a reset, it's supposed to be an automatic reset, but in this case it didn't reset, so they had to come in physically reset it, and then the power went back on. But I thought that was a very nice coincidence. I said, well, you could thank the Senate President, maybe her office was responsible.
Take credit, isn't it?
Take credit, yes, wherever you can, right?
The, the one thing that I remember from the regional-
Thank you, Paul.
Did you have anything to say?
No.
The one thing I remember from the, from that regional meeting was the, how important the cities of Chelsea, Deere, and Winthrop emphasized the importance of having personal relationships among the mayor and the boards of selectmen, and that those personal relationships went a long way of facilitating intergovernmental agreements and regional programs. And I would, I would say that the towns, that the Cape Cod Selectmen's and Town Council Association could be a place where, you know, we could sort of foster that idea, because I didn't see many of the, were there any selectmen there at the regional?
That probably was.
No, I don't think there were any. So I think when we go to-
Typically, there's none.
When we go to their, their meeting, I guess, a week from Friday, or is it this Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday. Perhaps when they, when they ask us about, you know, things that we found out that we would encourage them, that they use the Town Council and Selectmen Association to develop those kind of relationships, because we could see the benefit of actually creating, you know, a better, say, support for, you know, for, through intergovernmental agreements for regional programs.
But there were a number of town managers there, aside from mayors, because two of the candidates, the town manager and Falmouth were both there, which I thought was very good.
Yes. Yeah, the town managers attend that quite frequently.
Yeah, one of them actually made a presentation on the 911. The, the regional dispatch from Norwalk.
We seem to get a lot more support for things from the town managers than we do from the boards of selectmen.
Maya's doing a session on regional service.
Well, they deal budgets, so they understand.
True. And Sheila's on it, Sheila Vanderhoff, Paul Seaman.
Maya.
It's one of the Maya professional, professional management series ones, yeah.
Oh, yeah. When's that coming up?
There's four sessions, I'll give you the information.
Oh, okay.
One's in Plymouth, one's in, usually Plymouth Grab, they try to hit the, you know, Northampton, they try to hit all areas.
Well, Maya, they, their strategic planning, annual meeting, got postponed because of Irene. It was supposed to be that weekend, so it's in October, you know.
Okay, and I also went to the e-permitting thing that, you know, that Paul and, was it Ed, I guess?
Ed, yeah.
From Yama.
Ed Centio.
Ed Centio. It was quite good. Of course, when I said, does this, does this help get more, let's see, more level zoning, in other words, is there any, any opportunity of synchronizing the zoning among the towns? Is that going to allow, you know, you know, like, that seems to be the big impediment that, as much work as Paul was doing on the planning piece, the part where we don't have what I'd call a level planning field where we got to zoning, is a big impediment to moving water, you know, water forward. Yesterday, I went to the Mass Municipal Association Committee that, you know, that go on to, and they had a presentation from the veterans. And I'll share that with you. This is a PowerPoint that they have on the services that the state offers for, you know, for veterans. And I was quite impressed, they were, I didn't realize that they had any cemeteries, for example, but these are, these are the kinds of benefits that they're, that they're offering. They also, we, the, my MMU committee has Lyle Baker, who's a, I guess they call him an alderman in Newton, and he's been the one that has been pursuing, sure, he's been the one that's been pursuing the 40, you know, the zoning regulation changes. He says the big impediment right now into the change is that, as he reads, it's like 1,800 lines of, you know, of a bill, is that there are unfunded mandates, there are a requirement, as presently postulated, that you have to redo your congressional plan, and he's recommending that we resist it until we get, you know, get, you get some of those issues straightened out. There also handed out was the proposal on open meeting laws that, that were, there was a hearing at 4:00 yesterday afternoon, and this was the, they handed out some of the proposed regulations, as well as some of the, you know, some other responses. The main thing for us is that while in the proposed regulation that the Attorney General, we could have remote participation if we voted on it, and the person who was remote could vote by phone, the local communities, based upon the way they have this written, could not. And the other piece is that, that by identifying where you are, if you're not at home, for example, you could run the risk, because, you know, we do these live and they go out, that your, that your home could be exposed to, you know, somebody taking a cop out of your house, because, you know, you're not there. So that is coming close to an end.
No, I think yesterday was the deadline.
Yeah, they said, well, that was the, you kind of, hopefully.
So they will now promulgate final regulations.
But this is what they, but this is the feedback that they've gotten so far, these-
You guys submitted comments as well.
Right.
I put those together for you a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yeah, and so I guess we'll, you know, we'll get to that.
I mean, our objection was that the Attorney General promulgated regulations, said you needed a reason, and the legislature didn't say that. And I made a comment that said, well, people who are intending to come to a meeting could get stuck in traffic, and they could pull over and wish to remote participate on that. But the chairman of the meeting wouldn't know that there was a reason until the very end, so. end, so it's objections to that.
There's also a allowance to participate in executive, in an executive session remotely, but you do have to identify, that, you know, you do have to certify that you are alone and that nobody else is in the room. So anyway, that's, that's the, the main process. The discussion with the veterans was, you know, was really interesting, because the state does, Massachusetts has been identified as doing more for veterans than any other state in the Union, any other state in the Union. I think that's remarkable, and that's wonderful. And they, I think Ken, I forget his last name, but anyway, the Secretary for A&amp;F at the veterans has said that, you know, they have not been caught, which is, you know, which is very good, so I'm very pleased with that. I didn't realize that we had two state-run veteran cemeteries in Western, Western Mass.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, that's...
Okay, that's it.
Okay.
Well, I have my report, so please take a copy of that. And besides the REPC National Preparedness Month, I wanted to mention that Sean O'Brien at last month's Town Administrators Meeting did update them on the status of the 911 study. And they, the consultants will be providing options on best provided dispatch services on the Cape. And they will offer several alternatives, and they are planning on being completed by the end of September. So we look forward to that report.
Well, that would be very timely.
You bet, yeah.
If they have it ready by the end of the month.
So also, I wanted to mention that the assembly now is in possession of that, and you have copies of, that's the fiscal year 2011, Year End Treasurer's Report. So I did speak with Janice today, I know there was some questions on, you know, the pluses and the minuses for year-end fiscal 2011. And I think she's gonna schedule something from the, at an upcoming assembling meeting. I'm gonna go over to the two, to the 3:30 one.
Okay.
I'm gonna go over for that.
3:30?
But she didn't want me to do anything at four o'clock, so I think they have a little busy agenda.
So the question they had at the gazebo about the...
She's gonna talk to John Elman, she's gonna talk to Ron, we're gonna schedule, so I can do a presentation on this and answer whatever questions that they have.
Did anyone else in the room get one of these? Who might have been asking questions?
I know, but they're...
Are they available?
Public document, sure, that's, the Treasurer's Report we provide to the state every year, so...
I thought you would have had one ready for...
Also, this year, Americor, in remembrance of 9/11, the Massachusetts Service Alliance and Americor are participating in what's called the Roots of Remembrance. It's a tree planting project to help reforest areas of Western Massachusetts damaged by the June 1st tornadoes, and to honor the memory of those who lost their lives on 9/11. And their goal this year is to plant 3,000 trees. And you can sponsor a tree, it only costs a dollar to plant a tree. And so if you're interested in donating or would like more information, you can visit www.mass-service.org, and you can click on Roots of Remembrance, and it gives you all kinds of different...
Is this the one for Springfield?
Well, they're doing 3,000 trees all throughout Western Mass, that's what they're doing. And then finally...
Excuse me, what are you supposed to do, what are you gonna do with that dollar?
I don't know. I'm gonna buy a tree.
No, I mean, what are you doing?
I assume Bill was giving a dollar to plant a tree, is that how he...
Oh, I'm telling.
I'm not, I personally am not taking...
Oh, you're not? I think I'm asking for money, take it back then.
You have to go online, you can do either a check or you can do a credit card donation.
For a buck?
Oh, my God!
That's how it works now.
Can't you go sit all fours and send one, one check?
Mr. Chairman, we are going to a judiciary, we're just about done.
And then finally, you know, I am giving this retirement presentation, and I'll be happy to give it to you in upcoming Commissioners Meeting, to the Town Managers Association on Thursday, tomorrow, they're meeting on Nantucket, luckily I get to go to Nantucket. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, this contains information on the governor's pension reform proposals. They're still pending in the legislature, but this goes over what those proposals are, who they would impact, so...
You're supposed to be submitting to that committee, right? Aren't you gonna be meeting on this?
Yep.
And then, this was on the Bob Troy issue, which we didn't get to. Bob was called away unexpectedly, he was not able to attend, so I'm trying to schedule him for next week, if I can get him.
Do we all get one of those?
You can share it with the Commissioners. I think he sent it to all of you, wasn't he?
They're requesting this.
It's about the, it's about the ordinance on the 12-5, so you should take a look at that.
On the what?
On the 12-5, they expressed an interest in wanting to talk about it. And originally, when I, when...
12-5?
The 12,500.
The human services?
The human services.
Oh, that one, oh, oh, yes, I remember reading that, right.
So you should take a look at that.
So I'd asked, we'd asked Bob Troy to come, because there was some issue that there's a time restraint as far as going forward, and it would have been useful for him to be here for us to discuss it. So when he wasn't coming, that was scratched off the agenda.